...
Yep, yep.
Pushing down the ramp up there, supposed to like grab the table or something. He's helping it with the pedal and it's pulling this around.
I don't know what to ask you.
Make sure you grab them. Yeah, grab them. They're...
I would be crying. Sold the thing, keep up the desk. We didn't go, we didn't knock, we didn't say anything. We picked that up. It's all set. Well, there's three of us here. If we looked at it before, yes, now we should be able to do this for three.
Lock it in. Yep. Going to Marla Ridge and two bags coming out of the bottom slot, a little riff right in that space.
Another night.
First we just rip off the bag, four of them, next back rip. Of course, no way. So, I took a closer look. I did not do it, I stayed with Chuck. Took too long.
Hopefully the ones they sent us.
Hello, Sylvia.
There's stories that, uh, that were about those, started by Paul. Pretty good.
And I'll need to... Especially once I get dropped down here.
Johnson, uh, he under gives four dollars. Marla Ridge, uh, for the... I saw, uh, there's...
I made it.
It was this in our...
Why is either one of these... No.
That's why. You're killing all the girls.
I wouldn't like that. I'd have you like Kevin. Kathy's on us.
Get off.
When, do you work after that? Okay.
Oh, when they did the last time? Did you see Santa Claus Saturday? Yeah. Did you see the reindeer? Out there? Did you have the reindeer? Let's go. Where's your grandma? Let's go to the forest, okay? What were the reindeer's names? I did not know. You don't know?
Seven oh two will call me to order.
A dancer and a girl. Shalom.
Ben Teal? Approval of the jet, have regional park information, we can get you a regular plate. Give residents an opportunity to visit my city council, will be known in the regional park. Art brochure. Justin Cane said he was sure to help advertise regional park review and discussion of the brochure. Action needed motion to approve the brochure.
Roy, you can motion on the entire agenda first.
Need motion for the entire agenda.
Quick motion, jump on me, Jada.
I'll second.
Motion by Otto, second by Lloyd. Mark, you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Carry five over, motion passed. Okay, now we can move into regional park.
All right, um, maybe, uh, I think y'all got consensus brochure that we prepared, uh, it's a draft format, uh, for your consideration tonight. Welcome any comments that you wanna, wanna change anything on there or make any difference, certainly welcome. Maybe it'd be proper to discuss some of the meeting format questions under item E, because that may change some of the items of the brochure too, so. Just wanted to, I think, Art wanted to get some input from the council on your thoughts on, you know, what type of meeting you, you would like to have exactly, whether it wanted to be a formal or informal meeting. There's a couple of different ways of having it, where we could, uh, do like an open house type thing, where we give a range of time from say six to eight, if people come and go as they choose, and we can, you know, set up some different stations around the room, and people can go around and talk to council members and staff, and go from station to station and write comments on the boards, you know, things like that. Another option would be to do something similar, but maybe have a formal presentation at a certain time within that timeframe. So, maybe have an open house from six to eight, but we can just have, and then say there will be a formal presentation at six thirty or six o'clock or something like that. Another option would be to have just a very formal meeting, similar to the council meetings, and have it at seven o'clock, um, where I, you know, you can give a formal presentation at the beginning and then take comments from the public on a one-on-one basis, everybody coming up to the podium and give them, you know, two, three minutes or however you want, you choose. So, those are some things for consideration.
Um, in my opinion, I think we should go from like six to six thirty, just kind of come in and have cookies, coffee, like it says on here. Six thirty, have a presentation, I do, if that would be okay? And then, you know, from like seven to eight, they can talk to council, their staff, or, I wonder if any questions, comments that they might have.
Do we have the directive that all of us, or we all just kind of kind of spread around the room?
Just kind of informal, just, yeah, I think.
So, presentation is six thirty, then after that, they could just ask questions informally?
Yeah, that's what you're thinking, yeah, because I think when it's kind of set up like this, they get kind of intimidated, so we're just out and more casual.
I want it more, I want a formal meeting, I want it more relaxed than this, but, so that everybody feels comfortable, but I want a formal meeting, because there are money questions that we can't answer as a council, that, that, uh, city staff is gonna have to get involved with during the formal presentation. And, uh, I don't think it does anybody any good for us to be standing up here and not being able to answer questions. And the cookies and coffee, uh, I think we can do without that. Mike?
I agree with you there, Mark. The way it's set up and everything, people are gonna be asking questions, we don't know the prices on none of this stuff, except for it's on the back of the sheet, and Justin's gonna be showing for people to be asked a question about.
Well, yeah, prices for that is one thing, but how we're gonna pay for it, and over how many years is, is a... Is a, is a specific thing that we have to take, that's, it's gonna be... It's gonna take time, and it's gonna have to have Art and Wendy's input.
Ten Sean.
And all those questions may not be answered at the time of our presentation, I mean, you know, I think a lot of it's maybe gathered input from residents, and what, what do they like about the plan, or what don't they like about the plan? There'll be a lot of further study and financial, um, some financial figuring that needs to be done and stuff like that, based on which path we wanna go to.
That's what I really do to, people say, gee, a couple million dollars for what?
So, is the consensus formal or informal?
I would like to see formal.
Formal but relaxed?
Yes, I mean, you know, we maybe don't have to, you know, sit behind this, but...
It wouldn't have to be behind us, we could just have a table there.
Yes. Because I, I agree with Mark, I mean, there's a few questions that I'm not gonna be able to answer.
Right.
And, you know, I, I would like to, you know, if Sean has the answer, you know, Sean pipe in and get the answer. So, I mean, to me, I'd like to have them right there with us, having this discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
So then, we looking for a motion for formal?
With the presentation, then?
Yes.
So, would you do, you'd start out with the presentation, start the whole thing out with Johnson's presentation, and go from there?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that way it's so that we weren't having a red alert. Give them a word of that, so.
Yeah.
And then what time you want to start?
Is that a Monday or?
What day is that on?
Thursday.
It's a Thursday, January ninth.
And we already had it set, because we already took that month's time. Is that gonna work for everybody, or?
Time for me?
Yes, seven. Seven will be fine. So, we need a motion, uh, for this.
Make a motion to have it as a, uh, formal meeting, starting at, uh, seven P M.
Paul second.
Motion by Ben, second by Shell for formal, as a meeting, Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Art?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Motion carry five over.
Okay, so that, that pretty much answers everything, um, because we'll bring, power, if you send a little PowerPoint, you can have maps, you'll bring those plans.
Yeah, I'll bring some big boards like we had last night.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know, may or may not do a PowerPoint on this, you know.
So, the only thing left is the beverage and the cookie, are we gonna just skip that, or?
Well, I think there should at least be a beverages there, I mean, if we're gonna be there for an hour or two, you know, it doesn't hurt to have coffee, for people that come, you know, it doesn't matter to you guys. I said we should have coffee.
Have a coffee first.
Now, about the car. I guess, I guess I wanted to know, um, when it's talked about the regional park, I really think this should be sent out to, to like some of the township people, because maybe townships can help in the future with some of the amenities in the park. You know, in terms of grant applications?
Sure, where do we got, Marysville Township is right next to it, so, yeah.
Because I think those people would be using this park.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Send it to the township board. Send it to the township board.
When do they meet, so we can get to them then?
I don't, I don't know, I'm sure what they mean, but if we get this out in the next week or so, it'll be plenty of time.
Or have this on Facebook and the city webpage and all that stuff, too, right? So, did we approve the cookies and coffee, or no? Oh, I...
We can make coffee if you're, okay, that's pretty simple.
Right. Yeah, that's fine, please. And then, Justin, on this brochure, can we darken this somehow?
Sure. Um, before all the white portion there, the, the tax...
Residents are still, they have courage to look at, and that should be bold as gold.
That should be, yeah, bold as gold, I can...
There should even be something, if this is gonna be folded, sent out in the mail, there should be something right there on the white, saying, hold it. Saying that how important this is.
Huh?
Attention.
They are, are you there, Rodden?
Your attention is needed, or something like that.
That's your input. So, what about the cookies and coffee, or whatever we're doing?
I'll make a motion to have, um, first the township's copy, invite to do the citizens' copy.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Art, or Ben, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Art?
Vote.
Henry, no. Motion carry three, two.
So, only a copy?
And then, I guess, presentation going to be made, will you just make the presentation?
Yeah, as far as what information you want for people to take with them, um, you know, the, the back of this provides pretty much what we've been talking about, so if there's anything else you feel, otherwise that probably sums it up pretty good.
And this is the whole brochure that's going out in the mail, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then just have some there, if it's full.
Yeah, well, it's all the words, like the copies, no.
That works for me.
Do you need a motion for Justin, then?
Make motion to have Justin for, uh, do the presentation, and then just have flyers available.
I'll second that.
Motion by Otto, second by Ben. Ben, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carry five over. Okay, then we'll move into the Mindy Lane Streetlight, Justin.
Uh, can we back up one second, then?
Yep.
We then go back to A with our motion. You talked about him making those changes, but he didn't...
Right, or?
He didn't vote on it.
We need your input.
I will make a motion to approve the brochure with, um, bolder letterings in there, and then add a more, another cast gray into the white, plus, plus the posters, hold on.
And then it'd be just free cookies on the bottom, that's it, correct? Or, I'm sorry, free coffee?
Coffee.
So, what else would you like to see?
So, that wasn't... Well, second to motion, Shell.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, our brochure. Art, how do you vote?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carry five over. Okay, now we'll move on to Mindy Lane Streetlight, Justin.
Uh, yeah. Um, Sean did, uh, I talked to Sean about this, and Sean did contact Excel Energy, he's been in communication with them before, so, um, he did follow up with them, and, um, it's my understanding that Excel indicated that, basically, the cost of relocating a light would be just as much as, if not more than, than putting, uh...
Is there maybe a possible different company or something? I mean, I know we shouldn't...
I also asked Excel how they felt that if we hired our own contractor to relocate that, and Excel expressed great, uh, concern on that, to where if it's an Excel, Excel maintenance facility, they don't, they require that they work on it, no one else. Right. And if they wanted us to proceed with this, um, we have to designate what exact light that we're looking at moving, and design would take approximately months.
But that would be more expensive than just purchasing?
That would be correct. And the labor to move a streetlight is real intensive.
And it was ten thousand dollars just to put the light in?
That's if we...
That's if we wait till spring?
Correct.
Wouldn't it be twelve thousand if we did it now? Right, two thousand dollar frosty or something?
Yeah, and I'm suspecting it would be at least six weeks before they get to it.
Right.
So, we could just pay to wait, in my opinion.
Right.
Six weeks will be in the middle of January, and six more weeks, hopefully, early spring.
Which we'll think it, I'm gonna say.
Keep my fingers crossed.
What are you going to do in person or will it be this year? All right, um, I'll make a motion that you'll bring this back for discussion in the springtime.
Put it on hold till, down the table.
Second, I want some more discussion. Sean?
Yes.
You went on our conversation about possible, um, solar lights, or like the new park, Ellen, there, and...
I wasn't on.
We had talked about trying to do something, you know, Excel's always into their energy audits and everything else, and I realize that they're not gonna be making as much money, but is, is it something that's possible to do, or give it some thought as far as, uh, like, motion lights?
I think that would be an excellent alternative this time of the year, and I passed a guy, I guess a gentleman, on my way here tonight, was coming through the intersection, he had reflective piping in his jacket, and, uh, so my headlights caught him, by the time he got across the crosswalk, even with my headlights coming down Fifth Street, totally lost him. Then he turned on his flashlight, so that I suppose he can make sure that he wouldn't step on anything, I suppose he stepped on it, and, uh, but it's dark, and then it's even darker going up there, and I've had people ask me about that, especially when they're walking down here, it's pretty intimidating by themselves up there, so, maybe we could, um... Explore that. Explore that, get a couple of, get a couple of lights that we could, if the price is right, we could just look at our options. Absolutely, I think that's a great idea. And also, I have solar lights in my yard, and, and they work fantastic, especially the new L E D ones, they don't look dead as fast, so, it's, it's an alternative, maybe saves a lot of money to get some light. Sounds good.
Do we have any more report on this?
Yeah, I'd like to do an informational on that, uh, we've got some lights at the wastewater plant that, uh, we've had some issues with the past couple of years, and, um, we are trying LED those also. Uh, we ordered them last week, and I get an email today that they're back ordered until September twenty-sixth, so, this would give us ample time to iron all this out and explore those alternative options for these other places, too.
Are you going with, uh, solar style or just, uh...
No, it'd be regular, regular, electric, it would be easier. Happy, happy to get together with you.
Sure, go on.
Sounds good.
Okay, so then we'll move on to public works, vacancy, Sean? Oh, we gotta vote on the streetlight, then, okay. See if we can come up with some solar lights in the streets.
Well, we're, we're, I second the motion for table of this, tell, okay, tell us, right, okay.
All right, Shell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Art?
Aye.
Motion carry five over. Then we'll move on to public works, vacancy, Sean?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I got a couple of housekeeping issues, uh, we've had an employee tender his resignation to accept a position in another municipality, and, uh, we need a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept Aaron Rassett's resignation.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Art, Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Art?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Motion carry five over.
And the second item is that, uh, to get council up to date on advertising for the vacancy, uh, it went in the paper last week, it was run again this week, and, um, actually running a couple there for papers, and, uh, be looking for that coming up in the next few weeks to, um, hopefully, offer the new position, for the new position.
But so far, you haven't received no applications, Sean?
We got six today.
Thank you. Was that just in the Buffalo paper?
No, it was in the Delon paper, too. I missed the Buffalo paper deadline last week by three hours, because I was in a meeting, so I got it into the drummer. so I got it into the drummer, and then it'll be running again this week, so, um, we're probably gonna go till the end of next week, then the following week is another council meeting, so I'm not sure if I'll have a candidate ready to make an offer at that time, so it'll probably be the following meeting, once we get, uh, interviews and all that.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we move on to request for council action as Lieutenant Mindy Lane. Delegate, so...
Good evening again.
Hi.
Congressman, I had submitted a letter to you guys explaining the situation, as I has outfit, I didn't think I was actually gonna make it here, um, I requested to move this to an alternate meeting because I had a vendor and it was Hatton Rogers who was able to make it here, so I'm available for any questions that you have. I feel that I have taken the situation and had made it so that way I can prevent it from happening in the past. Uh, the situation happened inside my backyard, um, since then, when I had spoken to the officer, asking questions what I can do to prevent this, I thought if anybody enters into that yard that it was there, you know, the fault was on them for entering into my property, found out that's not the case. So, um, I left my phone and also I took pictures, I put padlocks on each one of the gates to prevent access from that, so that way anybody that isn't coming into their gated area where I keep my dogs, they have to ask me for access. Landlords also have the keys as well. Um, outside of that, uh, it's not much of a CD, but it is a training CD, teaching them how to like sit, come when they're called, et cetera, which I am working with Dexter. Working better with Dexter than what it is with Bruno, Bruno's three years old and I have not done a lot of training with him, so Dexter's more responded to it, as I mentioned, he is a year and a half old. When the situation happened, I had stepped inside the house, by the time I came out, you know, went to grab my phone, when I came outside the dog's parking, called them inside, and it was about thirty, forty minutes later, I received a text message from her letting her, letting me know that she was bit by the dog. Two days later, I received another call from the officer, and he said nothing was gonna happen, it was just gonna be a warning, because I was all worried about this, and he said nothing was gonna be done, it was just a warning, just information that he needed for the report. Uh, if I have to get rid, I won't, not able to get rid of my dog, if I'm not able to keep it, as you guys said, voted two weeks ago to give me permission to keep my dog, um, I would be responsible in breaking my lease because I would have to find a different tenancy. Something that's not easily done, I've never broken a lease before, and it's something that if I have to do, I'll do, whatever, and as I mentioned, whatever you guys decide, obviously I'll take that and use that and whatever I have to do to do it, you know, I'm not gonna disobey the council's orders, but this is an isolated incident. Now, I swear to the simple fact that she had, she had mentioned to me that if the dogs go to attack her again, she's gonna shoot my dogs, so I have not brought my dogs over to my parents' house during the day because she has access to the basement, I can't protect her, her son, or my dogs, so I think I'm doing everything I can as a responsible dog owner to prevent this from happening in the, in the future.
In your statement here to the, uh, sheriff?
Yes.
You said, uh, because I'm finding some contradictions in your story here, you said that, uh, Melissa's son was chasing your dog when it bit her?
Yes.
Okay, so, but in your statement here to us, you said you didn't see anything happen?
Dexter was over by her, Bruno was running from them.
And you were inside?
As I was walking outside, I saw the dog, and that's what I explained to the cop, because I told him, I'm like, I was inside when I heard that I was parking, so I didn't see the bite or anything like that, but when I came out, uh, Bruno was over here with Ben chasing him, Dexter was right over by Melissa. I called both of them in, they both came running inside, I closed the door, and that's all that I saw.
So John, uh, you have padlocks on the gates, but Melissa can still get into the backyard?
No.
No?
How does she take care of her dog?
She has a leader that's out on the front yard.
So you're not granting her access to the backyard that she is paying half rent on?
Well, the, the dog, I have to protect my dogs, I gave the, I gave the key to the landlord, and the landlord's fine with that.
I find that troubling. Another question here, how long, when did you get these dogs?
Uh, Bruno at that since he was three months old, Dexter I just got at the end of September.
Okay, why did it take you so many months to, uh, register your dogs at the city?
I didn't know that, that they had to be registered. I've lived here my whole entire life, I've never registered my dogs.
Right, you explained that last time.
As soon as the letter was received and I was informed that I had to register, I was down at the city office and I registered my dogs.
That was when the newsletter came out, correct?
Yes, when I received the letter stating that the dogs were not registered and that the city ordinance only allowed two dogs per residence. I mean, I know it's my, my responsibility to follow up, but I've talked to other people that have been here for ten years and they don't even have the dog registered. I have no problem doing that, whatever I gotta do as a responsible dog owner, I will do, I'm sorry I didn't do any investigation into it.
I, I guess, you know, looking at that as being, you know, if I'm gonna get something, you know, I have a, I have vacant property next to me that I own, I'm gonna build a, a garage on it, it's my due diligence to do the research and know what I need to do and to acquire the proper paperwork and take the proper steps beforehand before I go start building my garage.
Right, I understand that.
And I kinda, I kinda look at that as the same way as you need to do your, do your investigation, okay, you've got one dog, you're getting another dog, um, and I guess, I'm, living in Montrose is the first city I've technically lived in as my residency, and, um, you know, being a country boy, I know that you're supposed to register dogs when you live in town.
Like I said, I've, I've, you know, lived here ever since I was probably like eight years old, I went and started in fifth grade, I've never had, my parents have never registered a dog, I never knew there was a registration on the dog. In regards to multiple dogs, I guess I mentioned last time, the neighbor behind me has four dogs, so I didn't think it was an issue having more than two dogs.
Is there a reason why you can't bring this up, doing so?
I didn't think it was an issue, he said it was just a warning, otherwise I would've brought it to your attention, it's not like I was hiding it or anything like that, like I told Barbara.
Melissa, can we ask you a couple questions?
Of course.
I'm sure of. Um, is there a reason why you didn't let him know right away what happened, why you waited?
I didn't notice anything at first, because the dogs came running up from behind me and jumped on me, um, I, we had taken down our hammock and left it over to my mom's house, and that's when I looked and there was a mark on the back of my leg.
Okay. And then you sent him a message and then that's when you called Melissa also?
Uh, no, I called them the next day, because I believe it was like a Sunday, I called them the next morning.
Why weren't you calling right away?
It wasn't, I wasn't like bleeding, I didn't need to go to the hospital, it wasn't like an emergency or, you know, anything, it wasn't, or the dog needed to be taken away or anything like that.
Okay.
It was a minor incident.
How do you feel now? I mean, if he was to keep his dogs or not?
Fine, as long as I can, you know, if my son wants to play in the backyard, I mean, almost twenty-five percent of our backyard is a sandbox, I mean, you know, in the summer we were, we liked to play out there a lot.
And you don't have access to the backyard at all now?
I guess not anymore.
Is that correct, John?
I had to put the locks up, um, actually the twenty-second, because the dog night was Monday, the twenty-first, yes. I mean, if she, like, as, as I mentioned, if she would let me know that the dogs, that she was gonna come in the backyard, I had no problem putting my dogs in the yard, it's just I don't want anybody just accessing the yard without me notified. I have no problem letting her use the yard, and I told that to the landlord, I have no problem with that, I just wanna be notified, so I can prevent somebody just walking in there without me knowing, you know, in case I have to walk inside again.
Right, and, and your dogs are mostly in the house?
They're mostly in the house, they go outside to use the bathroom or play around and stuff like that.
So like if Melissa was at home and just wanted your dogs around the house and she could go?
If I'm not at home, my dogs are over with my parents, just because, you know, she does have access to the downstairs, I'm not home, if she goes downstairs while I'm at work and my dogs at home, I'm not there.
Do you feel threatened by my dogs at all?
No, I mean, they're small dogs, I don't feel threatened.
I hate to read into it, but because you didn't bring it up at the last meeting, it must not have been a big deal.
No, I didn't, I didn't think it was that big of a deal, otherwise I would've said, because I mean, I had a copy of the police report too, just in case, you know, it was brought up, but, I mean, I didn't.
But that happened after we approved it though?
No.
It happened before.
Yeah, this happened October the twenty-first.
We got, we didn't get the letter to tell the county, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just had a couple of questions of that, so, um, any other discussion?
I mean, I guess I do just wanna add one thing, I checked with the foster, um, the No Dog Left Behind Agency that I got it from, uh, Karis is the one that actually handled the adoption, she only had him for two weeks, she said there was no aggression issues with any of the other dogs, and the lady Dell actually had him for three months prior, and she had no issues with aggression, she actually has an eight-year-old grandson that comes over and was playing with Dexter all the time at the beginning, you know? I, I take it very seriously, you know, because I wanna do whatever I can to make sure this is not happening. And I talked to Karis tonight, because it's the event that I came from, No Dog Left Behind, she has three other people that are looking for training, because I asked her, I'm like, look, you know, I just wanna get some more training, because, you know, one thing Dexter doesn't always listen, you know, and like one of the things that they say on CDs, try to putting them on here and try that, so like I'm trying to do that, but I need some other more training, because I don't want him running off or something else, you know, when it happens to be a day that he isn't listening, so I'm willing to put training into him, and that's my responsibility.
Well, we need a motion on this.
Anything you wanna say?
I, I don't think so, um, I know that, um, I guess maybe I could just state my side that, um, it was not true that my son was chasing the dog, we walked into the backyard and the dogs came out from behind us, my son was hiding behind a tree because he's small, so even though they're small dogs, it is, to him it's intimidating when a dog comes chasing after him, so, and now we can't, I have to ask permission to go into my own backyard.
You don't feel quite right?
Well, I just, no. I mean, I, I haven't lived in Montrose for ten years, I just moved back a few months ago, and I did my job, I ran up on tools before I got my dog, I followed proper procedures.
What does the landlord say about you using the backyard with his dogs hanging off there? If you got permission from the landlord to use it, use the backyard being your rental and say?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Paying for it?
Yeah, because she used to run a daycare out of there, so the sandbox will set up in the daycare, and I mean, my son goes to her daycare at her new house, so she is, you know, she, she thinks it's great that he has a sandbox to play in.
I will say during the summer, I've never seen him in the backyard. They had a hammock that was put up and then they used, not just because of the lock, this was before the lock issue, because it was always tipped over every time a storm would come over, it was up late and up against the fence, I mean, like I said, I have no problem, it's just the only thing is, you know, I need to prevent someone just from accessing the backyard, it will, my dogs are out there.
Whether you have one dog or three?
What's that?
Whether you have one dog or three, right?
Exactly.
So if you have one dog, the locks would still be there?
Well, it's my responsibility to protect it, according to what the cop says, no matter what, if someone just accesses it, it's my responsibility, so he's the one that suggested putting a padlock on the locks, and just making sure to notify the landlord, and that's what I did.
Does she have a clear?
I mean, she has access, I mean, she can go, she doesn't have to go through the gated entrance, she can just go right downstairs or right out the patio door if she wants to use the backyard, she's more than welcome to. It's just, you know what, it's not just her, I mean, if the neighbor kid, you know, the football goes flying over in the yard and the dogs are out, the kids automatically, because they've pet Bruno and Dexter, they're just gonna automatically think it's okay just to enter in the yard, if this happens again, then it's, you know, my fault again.
Right.
So it's not like a banned backyard, I mean, I can't, it's locked the patio door, I can't prevent her from accessing that, so it's just the gates outside that I have locked up.
Now, if she comes down through your house, like you say, and she can go out through the patio door and that's, that's where your dogs at then, if you're not home?
If I'm not home, my dogs are over at my parents' house. Just because she does have access to the vet, uh, basement to do laundry, which she does during the day when I'm not at home, there hasn't been an issue all the way until then, so I've now paid my mom to babysit them during the day and go and pick them up after work just like kids, and I'm fi- perfectly fine with that.
Melissa, and, so again, if you're gonna use the backyard, do you have a problem to let John know that you're going out there so that he can be where, where his dogs are?
No, but I just think it's kinda dumb that I have to ask permission to go in my own backyard.
Just like, just like one...
I guess I don't look at it permission as much as a heads up, so that...
Well, yeah, I mean, if we were gonna be spending a lot of time out there, you know, like if, no, if, if we were going to, you know, like if it snowed and we were gonna go out and build a snowman or play in the snore, whatever, you know, that, I mean, yeah, that's fine, but I mean, if I wanted to run back there, like when I went to go take the hammock down, that takes five minutes, and that's gonna dumb.
Same amount of time that you used to text me to let me know that my dog bit you, same amount of time saying, hey, I'm gonna take my hammock down, can you please have the dogs inside, I'm just asking for me to know so I can make sure my dogs are inside away from you, that's all. And since the landlord is considering it as two rentals, an upstairs and downstairs rental.
Actually, Wendy was there for an ordinance for just a regular dwelling, a single family dwelling, not they have two different families in there or?
I don't know without having the ordinance book here, I don't, and I don't know if Barbara looked into that.
I mean, you know, if they were in a duplex or a common house, you have your own separate entrance on the...
Yeah, it's, we discussed that, that the last meeting was one of the questions that was asked, and it is just a single, it's considered a single family home, because it just has the front door, the garage, and I use the patio door of the basement to leave and enter. So, I mean, it is by classification, doing it at that, it is just a single family dwelling is what it's considered.
And you leave, which way through the patio?
I go through the basement, I don't have access, I mean, I have access, but I never use upstairs, ever. Yeah, exactly. So even though there's a shared kitchen upstairs, I never access it, so I, I'm perfectly fine with that, I have a hot plate, I have microwave, I have everything else, there's no need for me to go up and downstairs. Just works a lot easier just to separate everything.
Okay.
It's not been a perfect rental situation, but it's a lease, it's a twelve-month lease, we're bound by the twelve-month lease, and this is what's worked.
And it just...
When is, when is the lease out?
July first, thanks.
July first? Well, no matter if you had one dog or ten dogs, you're still gonna make her use access or talk to you before she enters the backyard, right?
Well, I mean, mainly the only issue is if my dogs are outside.
Right.
You know, before you enter into the gate, say, hey, John, I'm coming inside, I have no problem bringing the dogs in, even if I just let them, you know, but, you know, just coming in...
And you're not threatening them?
No.
Okay.
Little dogs.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion and let John keep his dog as we had discussed two weeks ago. Yeah, we still, we have to go back and approve it, don't we? Do we have to go back to whether we approve it, or does we, or is this just discussion?
From what Barbara had explained to me, it was a discussion on it and that you guys could revolt, right, I mean, keeping my dog or continue to accept him, is what she had explained to me, because I was confused on exactly what could be done. And I'm like, well, because I have this event and I can finish at eight, I'm like, look, I need to get there, but it wasn't able to be passed forward, so I'm like, I need to, so, trying to make sure I got everything covered.
Right, okay.
Well, can you take John, give her a key for that padlock on your fence if she don't wanna come down through the house, if she goes out around the back, if your dogs ain't in there, then she can use it?
Well, then it still runs into the problem, my dogs are in the yard, she enters in, and if the dog goes to fight her, I'm still responsible, it doesn't give me, I mean, the only thing I'm asking for is just a heads up, say, hey, John, I'm gonna go in the backyard, I will bring my dogs inside.
Is a dog owner's territory, I would not recommend walking into my backyard or walking out there.
No, not with a dog there, and, and, uh, for my own safety and the dog's own safety, you know, I would, I would not want you to do that, and I would not give you a key to go in my backyard on supervised.
You know, and also, I mean, ninety percent of the time, as I stated, you know, when the dogs are outside, I'm outside, because that's when I go smoking, because I don't smoke in the house, so most of the time I am out there, I won't say a hundred percent of the time, because there's times that I just let them out because it's freezing cold, I don't feel like standing out there, but they'll go in, do their business, and they come right back in. I don't feel like standing out there, but they'll go in, do their business, and they come right back in. You know, I have no problem giving her a grant at any time. Just saying, give me a heads up. I'll make sure my dogs are inside. And you have full reign in the backyard until you're done. I'll let the dogs out there. I have no problem with that. I mean, the main concern with putting the lock on there is just so that not anybody can come into my yard, you know. Because there's been a couple of times now, because the kids are playing out in the yard, that football's still in the backyard, you know. So I bring it, I toss over the fence. Like I told you, I'm like, I don't want you just coming in here and grabbing the football.
So I, I made, I'll make a motion to, like I said, to keep that John, keep his dog if that's what we do.
You say this happened before we approved your second?
This happened on October the 21st.
Because we didn't get the letter from Crossroads until the day after we approved it.
Yeah, the letter was mailed out from Crossroads on the 11th. So when you guys received it, it was the 13th. I received it actually last Thursday. Or whatever it was, I think it was the 14th is when I received it.
Are you sure you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, but, you know, I don't have any problem with my dog.
Well, I know that you don't seem to care about the idea, but well, I'm not about using.
I don't know. I just, I, the backyard thing, I think it is kind of dumb, but.
I think you had a good point. I think the council needs to address, uh, a home that's owned as a single-family dwelling that has a vault wall.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Actually, there's got to be, be some upgrading in the.
I thought, you know, it's, who's got something they don't, they would have never known. You know, it's not, they don't register as a city like that.
Does that change the?
Why we have a single-family dwelling in an area of a tall building?
I'm not going to knock the door to door saying this is one family, too. I mean, you know, I'm saying, I mean, how am I, how do I know?
Well, bottom line, bottom line, I give John credit for, for coming forth, asking the council for their dog. Today I was in Northridge Park and, as I'm standing in Northridge Park with my dog, there are four dogs in the backyard, fenced in backyard of another one. And I'll, I'll bet your money.
And others?
They're not registered.
I have one across the street from me and they ain't registered, so.
And some people's dogs. Hate to even say it, seem they can be more aggressive. There's no sense in taking any chance. Like I said, I won't, I won't, I will not go in the house with my dog in the backyard with my grandchildren out there. Even though they, they crawl on it and treat it like a horse and everything else. It's, I'm, I'm the one that has to be the grown-up there and the responsible one. And I cannot turn my back on a situation that could change. Kudos to which you're doing.
Like I said, I, until I spoke with the cop, it was like a lengthy conversation because he's a pet owner also. I didn't know all this. And I go, I thought someone entered my property. It was their bad, you know, but no matter what causes the dog to bite, no matter what the reason, it's my fault. And that's why, like I said, I went to find this on my own, but he's the one that suggests putting locks on the gate to limit access or end, you know, access to the backyard.
Thanks, Ken.
So do we have a second on this or?
I'll second.
Got motion by Michelle, second by Bart, approve. For Jeff, for John to keep his dog. And are you vote?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote no. Okay, now we move on to help America with all that. Opportunity for the city to apply for a grant to help cover costs for election equipment through the help of American Board Dad, 888. We need to adopt a resolution to apply for a grant.
Council, I received this from, um, Red County. They sent it out last week one day. It's a, a grant, like Roy said, to, we can apply for grant money to assist us with purchasing, um, election equipment such as some more boots because we're a little short on boots. We can get, uh, things like freestanding signage, so we don't have to use the tables. Right now we blew everything, our tape, everything to the tables for the signs. And we can also apply for grant to see if we can get the automatic door openers out front for a handicap. So all we would need at this time is approval to, or the adoption of the resolution that's attached, doc, uh, resolution 2013-13. That allows us to go ahead and apply for the grant. I made a motion to, uh, uh, resolution 2013-13.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, adopt a resolution 2013-13. I vote aye. Mark, I vote. Otto?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. Okay, now we move into holiday time off. Michelle.
Uh, my partner's went back. We talked about this two weeks ago. Uh, this pertained to Christmas Eve. Uh, looking into, I checked around, called up the cities surrounding us. And everybody is open, what are closing between anywhere between noon and two. So, um, I do have a question. How many people are, are we on vacation during that time?
Uh, I will be in the office. Barbara's on vacation that week. Anna's on Monday, Tuesday. So I would be in the office, but Wayne is going to come in and cover in the office. Sean is at work. Wayne and Jason will be there.
Sean, Wayne, Jason, you?
Yeah. Because Aaron, we won't have Aaron's position filled yet, so it's just Barb and Anna and Daniel will, are, they're all. And I talked, we've already spoken with Wayne. He'll come in and cover during lunch, so the office is not closed during, like on Monday. He'll come in and cover. And then by Thursday, Anna will be back.
Okay, so Christmas Eve, I make the motion, what's that new?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Bart, for city hall, the code is, um, Mark, I vote.
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carried by all.
We'll post that ahead of time, a week ahead. That would have closed.
All right, and so you've got none of that. Okay, and we've got Montrose seniors, so we can enter.
You have it done.
Huh?
Yeah.
What? Oh, December meeting, okay, okay. December city council meeting discussion related to the 23rd. Actually, needed motion to cancel 1223 city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to close that, or to cancel the, uh, 1223 2013 city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ben, second by Lloyd. Otto, I vote.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. Okay, now we can go on to Montrose seniors, so we can enter.
I keep getting asked what's going on with the kitchen.
As far as where we're at, what could be heard?
Yep.
I just heard back from the state of Minnesota on last week one day. Very many people. Uh, they, they have looked at our plans and they gave us a number of items that need to be changed. So we are trying to find a commercial contract that gave us a bid.
Okay, have you, have you been checking with, uh, the Dell Mall Legion and Rockford Township Hall for their potlucks or that?
I've got the contract from, I talked to the Rockford Township clerk and she sent me their contract. They, um, they allow.
They allow potlucks?
They allow it. They haven't done, they're not abiding by.
Well, they're not a licensed kitchen.
And the Dell Mall Legion, I think, can get five of your homes. I'm not sure how they do it. I think maybe because they're private. I'm not sure.
They are licensed kitchens.
They're licensed, I know because they serve meals.
And, um, you can, if you're a, you've got your certificate of food management, you can rent the kitchen at $40. And you pay another $40 for cleaning. And then if you want potluck, you can't use kitchen. That's how simple it is.
Well, when I talked, when I asked that of the state, they said absolutely not. There is no potluck. No matter you use the kitchen or not, there is no potluck. In a city building, so.
Well, the potluck's not for township, potluck is city.
It's a township, township, yeah.
Okay, so that settles that. Okay. That's all I got on the senior services.
What do you say about this link?
Next time. And when?
Okay, we move on to Park and Recreation.
Okay. I have a complaint against Wendy for, uh, the meeting on November 5th. I've been on Park and Rec for over three years and have always received, um, an agenda. She would call and tell me it was ready. I'd go pick it up. Well, that didn't happen. I was, I live, what, about three blocks away. It takes about three seconds to get here. She didn't call me. She said she didn't even give me a thought until she got into meeting, or it was still not too late to call me. And I do feel I shouldn't be paid for it because I was waiting to go. I was ready to go. Besides that, it was a school board election and I really didn't think there was a school open any meeting. Because I hadn't gotten my pack. Okay. And I do think the open meeting law was broke through the state. School districts for election days are prohibited. School districts, counties, municipalities, special taxing districts. Besides that, there wasn't a quarm. We have six on there. There was only three there. They needed four. Because Kathy Kepowski has never been notified that she isn't on there, so we, at that time, we still had six. So that was a broke, that broke that too. And then we should have known that.
Wendy, did you look into, um, the, even more meetings?
Yes, I'm sure. It says public meetings prohibited on election day. No special taxing district, governing body, school board, county board commissioner, city council, or town board, no supervisors. Our commission does not fall under any of those. Our commission is not a governing body. It can't make decisions. So it was not illegal for us to hold a meeting. And I checked with the attorney and it was not illegal.
Were, were any discussions made or there was no votes on anything? Were, were those needed, was there?
I think that we voted to have the council recommend appointing somebody. Sue, sue. However, I believe if we look back in our bylaws, it says, um, something about majority. Majority of the members, we talked about this the night of Park and Rec, I remember we were there and we were, and we look back at the, at the bylaws, if you're trying to decide if, if three was the majority.
No.
I can't, I don't remember.
So I, we, I know we talked about it. I'd have to look back at the bylaws, but I think our bylaws had something in there about, um, three being able to vote.
And who was there?
Jesse. And who else? Jesse, that's now Kirk.
Sharon?
No, Sharon wasn't there. Robert's there. So I'd have to look back at the bylaws. I don't have that. And as far as the packet, I did forget to call Sylvia. I didn't even think of it until we sat down at the meeting when I sent it to you and said, oh, I forgot to call Sylvia. However, Sylvia's been on the Park and Rec board since July of 2010. She just said that she was waiting for a call, so if she knew that she didn't have a packet, I think she's probably a responsible enough adult to call and ask where her packet is.
But you shouldn't have said, oh, well, she don't have email.
I said, I don't have an email address, so I couldn't email it to her and I forgot to make the packet and call her. I, you know, for, um, the one time since 2010 that I forgot to make a packet and call her, I don't think that's a, I mean, people do make mistakes. And I think it's just as much Sylvia's responsibility to contact me for her packet. So from now on, I'll make a packet and I'll be, it'll be there for her, but I'm not making the phone calls. I don't call anybody else.
You've been putting in Roy's box. I, we checked his box three times to make.
And I did know if I forget to make it, I guess it's her responsibility to call me and ask me for a packet, I.
Not after three plus years.
If, uh, Captain already missed three meetings in the bylaws, she, she's done the same with me. She didn't have the fourth or the fifth.
And I have one of Dan's, her third.
Yes.
I thought I called her.
In which case, I would have done five in between the two. She didn't come to, um, we did have a meeting in July, it was the regional park meeting. She wasn't at that either. So really, this was like her fourth meeting. She doesn't have.
She didn't phone Montrose anyway?
Yeah, she does.
Oh, she didn't? Yeah, I would call she didn't?
So, and I didn't contact her. She doesn't have a packet, so.
She hasn't gone back to me either.
She didn't.
Um, I, I mean, I agree with Wendy. Um, I think, I guess. Um, I think, I guess, both parties are responsible. Um, you can just continue with the packet over as well.
And like I said, if I, you know, if I forget to put it, they'll just call me, and I'll, I'll give up for you right away. I, I don't just make a slip, I don't think. Just a phone call, and I, I'll make it immediately and get it to you.
If you have a meeting and there's not a court member, is an actual meeting, the people get paid anyway for showing up?
In the past, yes, they have. Some of them, I have some of them don't take pay, so, so, but we count it as a meeting because they've shown up.
Yes.
They've taken the time to come. We don't make any decisions. We still will discuss stuff. We just don't make any decisions. Or make any motions.
Okay, is that one settled? We got one more? Yeah.
They can relet themselves and make their own decisions.
Do you want to say anything about that one?
I don't have that.
What?
Whatever this is, I don't have it.
No, no. The next item on my agenda is fifteen thousand.
Was this supposed to be on our agenda, Sylvia?
What?
This one that Roy's got?
Williams.
No, I didn't put that on. But I gave everybody back a complaint, don't it?
Right. We can't do anything on Sunday agenda.
Okay, then let's move on to this agreement and contract clarification. Oh, Mark, Michelle, you want to say anything on this?
We have met many times to, uh, get this mediation settled and agreed on, and I think all the parties involved agree on this. And, um, it's my recommendation that, uh, from, you know, the, uh, for something that, uh, council accept this mediation in good faith and, uh, discuss it if you want, but we can, we bring it to make it.
The agreements that were turned in, whatever happened to that, they just...
The agreements were, were agreed to forego that, to go to mediation, remember, at a council meeting.
Second, I'm...
Okay, I got a negotiation to lower from a relevant to a verbal one.
Now, and under the agreement section one, file a little job or written over there. Is there any other discussion?
I make a motion that the city council adopt this clarification, settlement agreements and clarification of contract.
I'll second. Motion by Mark, second by Lloyd, to approve this agreement contract. Johnson, I vote no.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Can I make a motion for John?
Let me ask her a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there been a, in addition to, uh, talk about adding a little privilege to the contract view as far as?
We could address that with the people. To answer your question, we could address that when we do negotiations, typically any OUs or anything like that, we bring up at that time and try to incorporate them all into one document. So, it doesn't count a piecemeal.
Right.
You know, so we don't know which one's original, so we just have them, and we just keep, you should keep two yours in a folder with the contract that way. And then come...
So, it's...
Come arguing time.
It's a pencil, man, for now.
Come arguing time, roll them all together, hopefully. Sometimes, sometimes people keep them separate, but otherwise, we try, we try to roll them in, just because if it has to change the contract, you don't need contradicting stuff sometimes, or vague language would be for incursion.
Version ten foot two, ten foot three.
Yes.
I get it. Okay.
So, we go ahead here, second on the motion, on, on here.
Second?
Motion by Michelle, second by Mark, to approve here. Ben, I vote no.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, that's, I tried to work, uh, yeah, I think that's because of a size issue, but, yeah. It's a lot of things. Yep, good. Good. I'm gonna wait till...